Need for variance, I mean it's kind of a simplification of it. And that's what they've, that's what they've applied for in the course of their variation. It's before you, what you're, you're dealing with this evening is not the, the approval or not approval, what you're dealing with is directing an ordinance to be prepared that you as a council then can take action on, at the next council meeting.
Well, what bothers me is, is you're saying there's no difference, yet there's additional four inches and some on one side and, and less than an inch on the other, but it is getting larger. I don't understand that.
I don't believe, maybe I can take a shot at this.
Please.
At some point, this house was built thirty-plus years ago.
Okay.
And at that time, it was totally conforming to the codes at that time.
Understand that.
Somewhere thereafter, the city council added these side yards, these setbacks, which made the house non-conforming.
Right.
It's through nothing that the owner did, it's through something that the city council did at a later date, which made the house non-conforming, which now requires if they want to improve it, they have to come before us for a variance.
And if I can add to that-
Where does the four inches come in?
The, the four inches comes in, besides that rule, we have a second rule, thanks to our code, that says if you have a lot of record that meets seventy-five percent of the requirements of the zoning, that it's a buildable lot and you can build on that structure. So, for example, this area is R3 zoning, I believe, right Roger? R2. R2 requires an eighty-foot lot, correct Roger?
Right.
The seventy-five percent rule says that as long as the lot meets seventy-five percent of the requirements, so seventy-five percent of eighty feet wide, which would be sixty-some, as long as it's a sixty-two foot wide lot, it's a, our code says it's buildable, even though it says it's gotta be eighty, he meets seventy-five percent of the rule. So what Mr. Breen was trying to explain is, if you apply the seventy-five percent rule to the seven-and-a-half-feet each side, which I think they can under our code, he doesn't need seven-and-a-half feet on both sides, he needs seventy-five percent of that. And if you take seventy-five percent of seven-point-five, he's at-
Five-point-six-two-five.
On both sides. And the existing houses, five-point-seven and five-point-two. I don't know if Mr. Bond agrees or not agrees that he can apply the seventy-five percent rule to a side yard, but I think the code-
Yes.
Allows it.
Then what, what does it talk about the additional four inches plus on one side-
Can I take-
And additional inch on the other side? And, and that escapes me-
Can I, can I now take a-
Mr., Mr. Breen?
Um, on the one side, our setback is, for the side yard at its narrowest point, is five-point-two-seven, that's on the north side.
Okay.
If we can build five-point-six-five, I'm sorry, five-point-six-two-five feet, the difference is approximately four-point-four inches in some decimal, point-three maybe. On the other side, where we are five-point-six and the requirement is five-point-six-two-five, we could build, we're, we're short point-three inch.
But you're still enlarging the building-
No, we're not enlarging-
By four inches on one side.
No, no.
Mr., Mr. Noak, would you respond to that? Is this the existing footprint and they're just going up on it, or is there any enlarging or expansion of the existing footprint?
As what I mentioned earlier, they're going straight up, except for the bump-out to the rear of the property where a proposed den is situated, as you can see in the right-hand corner.
I'm sorry, I just, I just don't understand the four inches. Everybody keeps talking about the four-point-something and the under-one-inch on the other side, the width of-
Alright.
Three hairs or something. Why doesn't it stay the same? Why do you need to go the extra four inches?
Let me try to, and I apologize. We are-
I apologize for not understanding this.
No, 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 no. Let me try one more time and I apologize. The side yards are not changing in any manner, shape, or form. The front is not changing. In the rear, the only change is that den, which is-
Understand, understand.
There is absolutely no change as to the side yard. All they are doing is going up. All I was trying to do is to indicate to you that if we use that seventy-five percent rule, then the variation for which I'm requesting is quite minimal. If you look at it on the south, right where our property sits, we encroach, currently, we encroach four-point-two-seven inches. So we're asking your permission to go straight up there. On the other side yard, we encroach point-three approximately inch, not feet, but inch. On, on the south, where it's point-five-six at its narrowest, we encroach point-three currently. Now, all we're asking to do is go straight up. We're not going out, we're going straight up. But where our property sits, those are our dimensions now. So, we could build currently, using your seventy-five percent rule, but we are point-three inch short on one side and point, I'm sorry, and four inches on the other side.
Okay, let me, let me ask another question. I'm, I'm sorry, I don't understand that. I really don't where the four inches is, but that, that the variance is needed. But, okay, let's look at something else, if I may. The garage now is a what, one-car garage, two-car garage?
One.
One, uh, present-
Currently, currently is a one-car garage.
One-car garage. Does that house have a basement?
Yes.
You've got a three-car garage. How in the world are you gonna put a, a slab for a three-car garage over a basement?
I-
I'm not, I don't understand how, I'm not a builder.
And I'm not either. I could have our builder explain it to you if you'd like him to-
It, it, it's, it's just-
But the, again, the plans have been submitted, but they're not finalized. We have made certain changes because there were certain questions that were asked of us, so we have made those changes. The final plans will be approved by your building department, they will be analyzed like everything else, and we will submit all of the engineering requirements and submit all, all of the proof that the foundation is correct. The, the only thing I can say right now, unless you want our builder to, I'll call up to explain it, is that all my client wants to do as it relates to this is go straight up.
Alright. Two years ago, I had a concrete deck in the back of my house. The concrete deck was built with the house, which was built back in sixty-three, and it wasn't seven-and-a-half feet from the lot line, so it's legally non-conforming. I wanted to have that same concrete on the deck be the base for a screened-in room. I was told by the building department, no, 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 you can't do that, because you have to go back now seven-and-a-half feet from the lot line. So when we built our screened-in room, we had to come in, and it's not even with the side of our house, we had to pull it in and make it conform. I said, okay, that's the rule, that's the rule. Now, you're saying, whoa, we got a seventy-five percent rule, we got this, we got that, and, and we don't have to do that anymore. I'm not, see, that's why I asked you what amount of that foundation is going to still be there. Wouldn't it, if they're putting in a slab for a garage that's three cars wide over a basement, it sounds to me like it would be less expensive to tear the house down and start and build a new house, which they can do, without any variance at all. And they could build it seven-and-a-half feet off the lot line, like everybody else has to at this point. Okay. I, I don't know, I don't know if I can ever understand what that variance means. I really don't think I can. But, let, let me say this much. We have a, an ordinance that's going to be, we're going to be discussing, uh, next month, about teardowns and rebuilds. And there's nothing in there, nothing that I could find that limits what you can build, except thirty feet high and seven-and-a-half feet off the lot line. Now, there's houses in, in my ward, in the third ward, on Ermen, for instance, that looks like an apartment building. It looks like a four-flat. It's, it's thirty feet high, and it's, I guess, the right amount from the lot line, but it looks like hell, pardon my language. I drove through this area, like everybody else probably did up here, and you've got houses that have ranches and by-levels, you have one-two-story that's twenty feet high, less than twenty feet high. This is a neighborhood. Over Farley, you got big houses, over here, you got big, but this is a neighborhood. All of a sudden, you're gonna have something over ten-foot higher than anything else in the area. Now, it's, I'm not, I don't mean this personally, but I think when we look at this code, at this ordinance for rebuild, we have to find some way so that you're not taking a normal set of houses and then putting something in the middle of it that looks like something out of Disneyland and it's a castle or something. I, I don't know what the answer is. I honestly don't. I heard that possibly the only way around this type of thing is to have a sub-type of thing. In other words, you have R1 and a sub-R1 for established communities where they can tear down and make it bigger, but it can't be the full thirty-foot. So you've got, what, almost over fifteen-foot of difference between your house and the next, the house next to you? I mean, I, I built a ranch. When I, when we built our house, couldn't afford anything else, I built a ranch. And, and both sides of me, the houses are, I've got one raised ranch, which is higher, I think it's about twenty-foot. The other side is a two-story, but it's modeled so that it fits in. I don't think my ranch looks out of place over there, even if there's, there's only one other ranch in the whole block, because it, it fits into the neighborhood. And I'm afraid we're gonna have more of these houses like in Ermen Drive, where you're gonna drive through and it's gonna go, whoa, what is this? So, I have to vote against this in principle. Not because of the people doing it, or not because of the way, the reason they want to do it, but in principle, I have to vote against it because I'm going to be against this ordinance unless we can find a way to moderate what we're doing. And I guess I, I have to say not drive some people out of town. I mean, I'm on a fixed income now, and, you wanna build a castle next to me, that's fine, but my taxes are going to jump up if it's there, because they, when they look at your taxes, they look at what's been sold in the neighborhood. And I don't care about the value of my house going up, I care about that. I'm gonna have to pay a heck of a lot bigger tax if they do that type of thing. So, I would, I would suggest that we do, I don't know if we can do it at the strategy meeting Saturday, but sometime, look into the possibility of having sub-classifications so that we don't have a huge house in the neighborhood of small, nice houses.
Alderman Peisak-
Sorry for the speech, I'm done.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Peisak.
As you, Alderman Shaki, I wasn't here last week, but I'm not gonna apologize because I think my Alaskan cruise was a better deal than being here. Sorry, folks. However, I'm surprised nobody, Mr. Shaki, told you that the variance on the side yard is not a physical movement, it's a ma- it's a formula, mathematical formula. It's not moving the walls, okay? It's, I guess you're gonna have to get Roger to explain it to you in detail, but it's just a mathematical formula. Now, I too have seen some things that, such as on Ermen, that just don't make any sense. It does look like a three-flat apartment building. However, we're in the unfortunate position that we have nothing to stop houses from going higher. We have nothing that says we are gonna stop houses from being built better, more expensive, having the richer look. Where I live on Harvey, we just had a three, an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar house built across from us. Living in a ranch, this conceivably three-story, I know it's, it's thirty feet, right Roger, on two-seventy-seven? Okay. It's changed, it's gonna happen. And there is nothing by law to stop these things from happening. We really can't. This variance, the reason you people are here with this variance, is nothing but a mathematical formula. I can't vote against the mathematical formula, it's just what is, okay? He's not changing the footprint of the house. Sorry, I think the guy's, the guy has the right to build what he wants to build. And he's not, hopefully it's not gonna look extreme. But, everybody has opinions on what looks extreme. And we also have other options, other situations where, as a council, we have to watch what we deny, because we can open ourselves to lawsuits by denying it. And hopefully, there's one situation that hasn't come to that yet, but it could. So, sorry, folks. I know what you're talking about, it's the height, I'm sure that you're against, nothing else but the height. We can't stop that. I can't stop that.
Alderman Coles, were you seeking recognition?
No.
Alderman Subak?
Again, if the house was knocked down under Kern Code, they could build it up to thirty feet. They would have to do the seven-and-a-half feet on both sides. You know, there's a similar addition that's going on right now in Montrose that I still consider in the neighborhood. They were not before the city council, because either, they complied with the seventy-five percent rule, and so they didn't need to come before us. There was a similar variance that we just approved last month on Dunley. Originally, the variance wanted to encroach further into the side yard. Some of the neighbors came and objected. The builder changed, or the owner changed the plans to go straight up, and we approved it. I think we approved it unanimously, so I think we need to be consistent. There was Mount, Montrose and Cedar, we allowed a ranch to go up to a second story. I don't think they became, came to the city council, maybe it was maybe two, three years ago. But the neighborhood is changing. I understand concerns about real estate taxes, but, you know, the Wooddale portion, we're not approving these variances in larger houses to try to get more tax dollars. The difference in tax dollars for the city of Wooddale on a three-hundred-thousand-dollar house versus a six-hundred-thousand-dollar house is really not gonna be that much different of what our portion is. We're just, we're basically letting people do with their property what they're allowed to do under our code. We're respecting their property rights. The property right allows these twenty-year residents to make an improvement, they wanna go straight up. We shouldn't force them to change the plan to go in by two feet, because if they go in by two feet, we have no say, and they can go up thirty feet. If they tear the entire house down, my guess is they wouldn't keep it at twenty-eight feet deep, because they're not near their thirty-five percent lot coverage. They'd go much deeper. If they're gonna spend the money to tear it down, it's even gonna be a bigger house. So, I think that, you know, with respect to all the neighbors that spoke, one of the key points was Mr., Mrs. Stoll who spoke, she was the last house built on it, and she put up a two-story. So, things change, and in her opinion, the two-story of nineteen feet was inconformity. My guess is everybody on the ranches around there, when they, when they saw the two-story came up, they might have had the same comments we hear tonight, that it's a Monstrosi, it's a, it's a McMansion, or whatever they were calling them back in nineteen-seventy, so. So, we're, we're moving forward, we may differ as to whether or not it's moving forward, but I, I disagree with Alderman Knyte that we need to try to stagnate our growth here in Wooddale and not have property values go up. Property values, that's a number-one investment everybody here in Wooddale has, and if we can tell people, we have good news, we're gonna try to keep your property values constant. I don't think any of us will get reelected in the next election. That's not something you stand for. Thank you.
Alderman Knyte?
Yeah, I'm not saying we should stagnate the city and all that. All I'm saying is the trend is that the people who are established, who have been here for a long time, who are on fixed incomes, are going to be forced out of the community with their property taxes, which a number of them already have been, on Oakwood and other areas in my ward. I didn't say we're gonna stagnate progress, or if you consider this progress, I don't, but that's a difference of opinion, okay?
Alderman Shaki?
Just to sum up one more time, I'm not against this house, or these people specifically. I brought this up because we do have this coming before us, and a new ordinance, about ten teardowns and buildups, and we need to look at this closely so that we can make it within the law to have some way of modifying the new houses that are going up where they would be standing out too much. So, just, I, I'm asking everybody just to think about it. I don't know how to do it, I really don't. I'm not an expert at this, but think about looking at that ordinance and finding some way of reducing some of what people want to do. Thank you.
Anyone else seeking recognition? Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
No.
Alderman Subak?
Yes.
Alderman Knyte?
No.
Alderman Peisak?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
No.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Talome?
Yes.
That passes?
Alright, that concludes my report, mayor.
Thank you.
Public Works, Alderman Subak?
Mr. Mayor, I need to, we were tendered, I was tendered, an original petition from the residents of South Mount Clair that requested the elimination of sidewalks. I want to give those to the city clerk and have her put in part of the record. We also were given a copy of the petition, respectfully requesting us to go to DuPage County Forest Reserve, requesting a path along the forest preserve, and that's a copy, I'd like to put that into the record. I would like to respond to some of the public comments. We didn't do the survey, and we met with the residents on Mount Clair and Arcoy over the sidewalks. Joe and I made the representation to the residents that we support sidewalks. We told them that historically the city council did also. We did the surveys, not to tell them that if the majority didn't want them, we weren't gonna do them. We did the surveys to provide the city council with as much information as possible, so you can make a decision, as you did tonight and last week, to include the sidewalks. I also didn't try to undermine Ms. Gabor and her attempts with Dewey Parati, the president of Forest Reserve. In fact, I talked to Mr. Parati on numerous occasions, and he directed me to talk to his staff as to the possibility of the installation of a gravel path along the forest reserve property. So, that's my first item that's not on your agenda. Second item is the approval for the change in the道路 ride services. Thank you for coming tonight. This is not a, an easy decision. We have, we got your letter a couple, about a month ago, with respect to the appreciation for your daughter. I didn't realize how long it had been going on, quite honestly. We're not the only decision-makers, we have lawyers that give us advice, we have Irma that provides insurance for the city. But you, you brought up a good point tonight that I didn't realize, that even though we've been taking her to and from school, there's nothing that prevents us, and, and we need to pick her up if she needs a ride to the target during those hours. And, you know, it is a school board issue, you know, that's who pays most of our taxes to, is the school board, to get your daughter to and from school, but, you know, I'm in favor of, you know, trying to come to some resolution, but, you know, personally, right now, I don't wanna support reducing the hours at this point. We just had a dinner last night with the intergovernmental bodies, we should discuss this further. We should put Alf Logan, Frank Williams, the mayor, and the attorneys, get Irma involved, and see if somehow we can come up with something to resolve this. Because right now, I just don't support changing the hours this quickly. I mean, you know, we've been doing it, what year is your daughter?
So-
So, if anybody wants to vote on this tonight for the shortening of the hours, otherwise then make a motion to table this back to committee for further discussion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alderman, favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Next item is the report and recommendation of the triangle gardens at the Freedom Bell, the flagpole, and in front of Christie's Restaurant next to the train station. I'm sorry, bear with me with the name of the company. Committee maker, made a recommendation that failed, but we make, will make another motion toward the contract for services not to exceed. Somebody have that memo? I don't have it.
Thank you, Gary. Unprepared again. This is one we sent out to seven requests for proposals. I did review the request for proposal, and it was well-written. My only problem was it didn't provide for any specifications. So I think what was presented originally from the Streetscape Committee to what we're gonna get eventually, might have changed. So, but I'll make a motion to approve the awarding of the contract for those three triangles to Water, Wood, and Stone LLC of Genoa City, Wisconsin, in an amount not to exceed forty-nine thousand, six-hundred-ninety-three dollars and eighty cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Another question, Alderman Talome?
Yeah, and a, and a question. Am I to understand now that you're talking about doing the whole thing?
Yeah, that was, well, that was a motion that came out of committee that failed. The representation I made to the Streetscape Committee is that would bring it, I don't think they needed to come to committee last week. That, this should be a committee that can go right to council, so I can get things done. I offered as a compromise to that committee to pick one of the triangle areas. I won't support the motion. I'm just bringing the motion up so it can call to a vote. I still think we can wait till the fall. I think we should send this out for bid proposals, and with the bid proposals, send out exact specifications of how many plants we want, what kind of spacing we want to the plants, because right now with this, somebody might plant all the flowers or bushes two feet apart, and the next one might do three feet apart. So I think we need to have these specifications and have them consistent, so make sure we're comparing apples to apples with respect to the bids.
Alderman Shaki?
First, a question and then a comment, if I may. We had talked about the new dental office going in on the east side of Wooddale, and we had talked about having one more sign made to put on that property, because they, they agreed that we would be able to put that sign there. I was just wondering if the Streetscape Committee has done anything with that, or do they need to? Did we make a decision on that? I don't remember.
Mr. Williams?
It's my understanding that we're still working with the owner to see if they, it can be put there based on the parking. Mr. Noak, you have further?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Manager. Yes, Alderman Shaki. Currently, they are still waiting for their IDOT approval for their curb cut. Until that particular aspect of their engineering is completed, it'll be difficult to determine how much space is available to place the sign. Well, we will keep you apprised, though.
And the comment, if I may.
Alderman Shaki?
Alderman Subak, you convinced me. I watched the last meeting on TV, 'cause I wasn't here, and you made some very compelling arguments, I think, about having one of those triangles done now, and then if it works out well, perhaps next spring to do the other two. What I would suggest is that the, the triangle by Christie's is the one that doesn't look that good right now, and perhaps to do that one and see if Gus can take care of the watering. If that goes well, and those plants that are not supposed to die in dry weather do last out, then we can look at the other two triangles. And, the only question I have is, why in the world did we put tall grass in front of our Wooddale sign on the other corner? Who thought that one up to block off the sign? I mean, it's nice to have tall grass, because we do want that type of thing, but not in front of our sign? I, I think you can dig that stuff out and transplant it, because I've got some in my backyard, and I'd sure, for the time being, just move that grass so we can see the sign. In, in the fall, then, whenever it is, you can trim it down, actually, right now, at least a little bit. But, again, my suggestion would be that we work on the one triangle that really does look bad and really needs it. Alderman Subak convinced me completely about that. So that's the way I'll be voting. Thank you.
Anything further, Alderman Subak?
If I'm able to convince Alderman Shaki better by him not being there, can I volunteer not to come to any more meetings for the rest of the year, and I'll just phone in my request, Alderman Shaki, and maybe him and I can get back on the same page for my last two-hundred days of office, Mr. Mayor? Would that be allowed, or no?
It certainly would make the meeting shorter.
We would have to arrange our vacations different times or something.
Anything further? Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Subak?
No.
Alderman Knyte?
No.
Alderman Peisak?
No.
Alderman Shaki?
No.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Talome?
No.
That motion fails? We do not have, Mayor? Alderman Wesley?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we do one triangle this year. We have contacted the company and looked at doing possible one triangle.
I'll second that.
And a triangle that we would- And a triangle that we would-